Good.
All right.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Monrovia City Council this Tuesday, April 6th. We're glad you joined us this evening. And this evening, our invocation will be given by Police Chaplain Terrence Brown. Chaplain Brown, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
We're happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
Always look forward to your wisdom and good words.
Outstanding. Let us pray. Oh, Lord, as always, we come before you tonight in the spirit of praise and thanksgiving, thanking you for your consistent and reassuring presence. When there was darkness, you was the light. Anxiety, you was the peace. Despair, you was our hope. And in the midst of uncertainty all around us, you was the anchor that steadied our minds and strengthened our hearts, igniting and refueling our courage, faith, and commitment, giving birth to a creed, a declaration, a movement that truly exemplified citywide, community-driven strength, unity, and resolve. Monrovia blessed, Monrovia united, and Monrovia strong. So on tonight, blessed, strengthened, encouraged, uplifted, and inspired. Everyone under the sound of my voice, their respective homes and families, their personal health and overall well-being. May your amazing grace be constant in their lives, this meeting, and upon our city. In your glorious name we pray. Amen.
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 Chaplain Brown, thank you so much for those words of wisdom. I always look forward to your encouragement and kindness, and we appreciate you being here. Next up will be our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Spicer, and I'm going to display my flag.
All right. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that. I'll now call on our city clerk to do the roll call.
I'm coming. Sorry, technical challenges for other participants. Okay. Councilmembers Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Chevlin appears on the computer, but she's actually having trouble logging in at the same time, but she's semi-present. Councilmember Spicer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yeah.
And Mayor Adams.
Here. Thank you so much. We had no closed session tonight, so there'll be no report on that. We'll move on to our presentations and proclamations. And our first PR1 is a resolution supporting the Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. And I'd like to read that. Whereas the ongoing spike in hateful and violent acts against the Asian-American and Pacific Islander community in California and across the country is dangerous and deeply disconcerting. And whereas anti-AAPI sentiment, including discrimination, harassment, and physical assault, have no place in the city of Monrovia or anywhere else in a civilized society. Whereas the city of Monrovia is committed to inclusion and advancement of diversity and equity for people of all races, ethnicities, national origins, ages, genders, and backgrounds. And whereas discrimination, violence, oppression, hate, bigotry, and racism threaten democracy have no place in our society. And they represent an assault on the rights and freedoms of all Americans. Whereas the city of Monrovia and all levels of government must work to combat intolerance, xenophobia, discrimination, and hate. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Monrovia stands together with the rest of the nation in condemning all forms of hate, racism, and violence perpetrated, tolerated, or encouraged by any group or individual. That the city of Monrovia supports our AAPI community members and condemns racism, intolerance, hate, and violent attacks against them. That the city of Monrovia is committed to protecting all residents and families, no matter their ethnicity, national origin, race, faith, sexual orientation, or gender, and is committed to inclusion and advancing equity and justice for all people. Every person in Monrovia, and I want to repeat that, every person in Monrovia deserves to be treated fairly, with dignity, and to have their humanity, existence, history, and contributions valued. Dated today, the 6th day of April, 2021. And it is, I know I speak for the entire council, when it's our hope that the entire community will listen very carefully to those words, and we can all work together, because there should be room for everyone. If it doesn't work for everyone, there's something wrong. So I thank the council for allowing me to do that. We will move on to PR2 proclaiming April 2021 as Preparedness Month. And... Let me pull that proclamation up. Whereas Preparedness Month encourages Americans to prepare for disasters. Whereas it is anticipated that a catastrophic earthquake in the Sanguevalle Valley region would contribute to the destruction of life and property, as well as making usual services such as electricity, running water, refrigeration, and telephones unavailable for long periods of time. And whereas by taking appropriate preparedness measures to be self-sufficient, together we can reduce the effects that a disaster might have on families and businesses and help speed up the recovery process. Whereas the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, CALOES, is promoting a new public education campaign, Earthquake Warning in California, the nation's first publicly available statewide earthquake warning system that uses ground motion sensors to detect earthquakes before humans can feel them, which could give California residents crucial seconds to take cover. And whereas to receive earthquake warnings, individuals and family members can download the My Shake app and ensure phone settings are adjusted to receive emergency alerts. And whereas emergency preparedness is a shared responsibility, and each of us can reduce the risk we face by better understanding what could happen and learn how to better prepare ourselves, our families, and our community. Now therefore, I, Tom Adams, Mayor of the City of Monrovia, along with the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Preparedness Month and encourages those who live, work, or attend school in Monrovia to prepare and to participate in the Earthquake Warning California Campaign, which will enable Californians to take protective actions in advance of an earthquake. And that is also dated today, the 6th day of April, 2021.
Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Becky Chevlin, I apologize for getting on late. I had problems logging on, but I am here. I did talk to Alice. I told her I was having difficulty, so I apologize. But in reference to your last proclamation, I know our CERT team and specifically Susie Dobson, as she has presented to many groups Preparedness Programs for Neighborhoods and for disasters, and we might want to look into publicizing that a little more so that we are prepared. And I know there's a Shake Out event that's normally in September or October, but I know that Susie has presented to many of our groups. I want to say it's a Red Cross program, but I'm not positive. But there are things that we can all do to work together as a community to be more prepared.
Good. Thank you for that, Becky. We'll now move on to our Student Government Report. I don't see Sophia with us this evening.
I have not heard from her, Mayor Adams. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. We'll move on now to our Consent Calendar, and I'll ask the city clerk if you've received any comments from the public on any item on the consent calendar.
I have not.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any objections? Alice, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crujington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public input, and we're going to change this up a little bit. We've listened and heard that a lot of people have missed out. We have all missed out on meeting together, but a lot of people have felt that their comments being read by the city clerk perhaps were not as good as they wanted it to be. So we have set it up so that anyone can speak as a part of our meeting. But I do have to caution you, if you've sent your remarks in for the city clerk to read, you know, you only get to cover one topic one time, so we won't have the city clerk read your comments, and then you read your comments. So we'll move on to public input, and I'll ask the city clerk if you've received anything from the public.
I have, Tom, Mayor Adams. And if you don't mind, I'll go over some of the new participation routes before I read comments, just to give people a minute to absorb that. And then anybody waiting to speak, just know that we'll come to that after the written comments are received.
And I see there's already a couple of hands up, so give us a couple of minutes. This is a big change for us. We're not going to pass anyone by, I promise you that.
And so we do have staff monitoring. That raised hand, but if you'll forgive me while I read from a written page for a moment. As you mentioned, in order to facilitate live public participation, we are accepting public input via Zoom in addition to the written emails. And these are the following ways that you can participate. Again, public comments still accepted by email to cityclerk@ci-monrovia.ca.us before 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Those are forwarded to the City Council and read by me so long as it remains under three minutes, and over that, it may be summarized in the interest of time, however, council, and posted to the website, the full comments. If anyone wants to participate and provide public comment via Zoom from your computer, laptop, or smartphone, you can join with the Zoom meeting ID 822-1439-5957. Again, that's meeting ID 822-1439-5957. If you don't have a computer or smartphone and you want to call in, the number to call is area code 669-900-9128, and it's the same meeting ID, 822-1439-5957. I'll give that phone number just one more time, 669-900-9128. If you want to prevent your number from being displayed on the broadcast, you can dial star six seven before you dial that phone number. During public comment portions of the agenda, if you're on your phone, press star nine to raise your hand, so to speak, or on your computer or smartphone, press the raised hand icon. And again, at the appropriate time, staff will call on you, unmute you, and provide you a time of three minutes to speak. And again, anybody joining in will be muted until the appropriate time for comments. With that, I think that covers it.
I think it does. You know, we're trying to make it as easy as possible by giving everyone every imaginable way of participating in the meeting. But I do have a question, Alice. Do you want to read the comments that were emailed in first, or do you want to go to live comments first?
I think I'll take the ones that we've received first and then go to live, if that's okay.
Okay.
I did want to mention also that all of that information I gave is available on our agenda and on our website for tonight's meeting, if somebody didn't catch everything. So tonight, under public comment, I believe we just have one comment from Sari Canalis of the Chamber of Commerce. She reports nine new members, which include Lone Star Percussion, Waddell and Reed, Hands-on Services, Rev Local, Grocery Outlet, Vintage Rose Battered Women's Shelter Corporation, Concept Builders, Grand Oaks Termite, Millennium Pension Services. In addition, she included a flyer for the Monrovia Young Professionals Spring Planting Event, as well as a flyer for the Restaurants Care Resilience Fund. So you can check our website for a copy of all of that information. The Restaurant Resilience Fund process begins April 11th. And that is actually the only written comment for items not on the agenda, and we do have some raised hands. So we'll go ahead and unmute Ms. Gail Montgomery. And as soon as she unmutes, it's your time to speak, Gail.
Hello, everybody. I have missed you. I haven't missed you, missed you, because I haven't missed a meeting except one since we've been doing the virtual thing. But I want to thank you very much for making this an option, because it is really hard to sit on the other end of a meeting and hyperventilating and go, oh, no, they're not going that way, are they? I tried a voodoo doll to get some of you, like, in the center seat to do what I wanted to do, but that didn't work, and writer's cramp at the end of the meeting wasn't any fun. So I just want to thank you all. Becky is as hardworking as ever. Gloria has wonderful thoughts. Alex has been putting forth some good stuff. Larry is still a wonderful Larry. And Tom, if I've said it once, I've said it 100 times, Mayor Tom, please behave yourself. We've already talked about behaving yourself. It's just great to have this as an option, and I just wanted to remind our neighbors that even though the state of California is now scheduled to reopen fully in June, middle of June, the fact of the matter is, in the last week or so, our numbers are rising again. We had another eight COVID cases come up yesterday. So while you can go out and support the restaurants and have a good time, please be remembered to be COVID safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, and that reminds me to show my mask to everyone. You still need to do this. We're not out of the woods yet.
Sorry, I muted my own microphone. Next up, we have someone identified as user WP. If you would care to unmute. And it is your turn to speak.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just want to start this off. My name is Adam. I've lived in this town for going on 41 years. This town is, it's an amazing town. Some of our leadership has done a wonderful job bringing this town on the map. With that being said, over the last few months, I have noticed an increase in crime spree going on in our town. I've noticed an increase in murders in this town. And I remember when this town was a very quiet town, when downtown Monrovia was a ghost town. And we got rid of the gangs in this town, and this town has come leaps and bounds compared to where it was 20 years ago. But I have noticed the increase in motorcycle gangs that have moved into this town. I was hoping the police chief would have been on this call. And I want to bring the attention of everybody in the leadership of this town that the Mongols have moved into our town and the Vagos have moved into our town. And my personal opinion is that the increase in violence stems from those two motorcycle groups. The last statement I read from the city manager's office that the increase in crime was because of COVID and mental illness. And I have to say, I don't believe that's true by any means. I believe that the Mongols are 100% the root of all of our crime on top of the homeless. We have a huge homeless population living on Colorado and Second over by Eisenhower Park. Just a couple of weeks ago, I saw a young man shooting up heroin on the street where the kids play. I also know that there's another homeless encampment over by the McDonald's on Foothill Boulevard. So my question to Mr. Adams, the city manager, and man, I was hoping there would have been the police chief of Monrovia on this call, what are your guys' plans on ridding our town of these two groups? And I would really urge you guys to do your history on the Mongols and on the Vagos. The Mongols are a 1% group. They have no right in our town. They deal drugs. They deal in small arms. They deal in drug trafficking, probably sex trafficking, everything you could possibly think of. And they're sitting in our town, as I'm sitting at breakfast, ordering food, and they're in full colors. So my question is, what are your guys' plan on to do to rid these people out of our town and keep the community safe? Thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate it.
All righty, thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate your comments, and we'll respond here in a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, I'll call on Carol Daly, and just, I guess it's not a reminder yet, because we haven't gone through this, but we will keep video off and people muted until it's their turn to speak. If you choose at that time to put your video on, that's up to you, but during the rest of the meeting, we'll keep muted and video off. Carol, it is your turn. If we can just have you unmute, Carol.
Mute.
There you go.
Hi. I was hoping to show my face when I was talking.
But you can.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Start my video. Okay, got it. That was a frightening thing that that man was talking about. Wow. I just wanted to say thank you so much for restoring our voices to our City Council meetings. Appreciate it so much. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Appreciate you being here. I don't see any other hands up.
I believe that's it, but I'll just say one more time, if there's anybody on who hasn't spoken, you would press star nine on your phone or click on the raise hand button.
Okay, seeing none. Alice, I guess I'll ask you to read the comments that have been submitted prior to the meeting.
On that one, we got that already with Sari Canalis. For this item, I have items on the agenda later.
Oh, okay. So that's all the public comment, then?
That is.
Okay. Very good. We will now move on to the, we have no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to reports of city manager and staff. RCM1, Dylan Feek, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of updates for the council this evening. As you have before you on our directives log, several of the items are going to be before you tonight. A review of the Oak Tree Preservation Ordinance. As we discussed, researching live public comment and bringing that back to council tonight, we are glad that we could actually make it happen tonight. One item that was scheduled to go, but some last-minute information we received pushed it back to next week, or the next council meeting, on the 20th, we'll be bringing an item to City Council for the electric vehicle charging stations on a couple of public lots. So we're excited to finally get moving with that. We'll call this a pilot program, because if it works and we're happy with it, we'll be able to further expand it, but we want to start small before we go to an EV charging stations everywhere. Couple other items that are not on the list that I'd like to brief council on first. The last Wednesday, the city conducted our first panel interview for our vacant Public Works Director position. We're very fortunate to receive over 80 applicants, very capable and able persons who seek to be leading our public works team here in Monrovia. We're very excited about the recruitment. We do another round, two rounds of interviews tomorrow as well, and so we're very hopeful and optimistic we'll be able to bring in a new leader after Sean Sullivan's recent departure. As mentioned a little earlier tonight, the state of California came out and announced that the state will fully reopen on June 15th if vaccine supplies for 16, for persons aged 16 and older, is available, as well as hospital rates staying low. As with any kind of gubernatorial announcement, there's always some follow-up information, a lot of questions being asked. So we're not 100% certain what that means, but by fully open, we believe that the state may not have these, you know, different restrictions and different tiers and reopening plans. So we're still waiting to learn what that means, but that was an important announcement made earlier today. Anecdotally, a couple of months ago, the council directed me to review some Edison LED streetlights here on Ivy Avenue in front of City Hall. We pushed back, a couple of the council members who observed the 3,000 Kelvin bulbs, we just thought they were too bright. Edison actually came back and said, we want to try something a little different, a little bit lower, a 2,750 Kelvin bulb, which is a little bit lighter and softer. And we were going to call those the Monrovia bulbs because of our kind of hesitance to go with 3,000. So we're going to be bringing some out here. We'll put those in front of Ivy. We'll take a look at those to see if those feel right before we proceed with anything. But I just want to let the council, the public, know that even though the council said we can move forward, we wanted to do so so long as everyone felt it fits our community. And the 3,000 bulbs, at least at this time, still seem too bright. I'd like to talk just a little bit about some of the comments that were shared earlier today. I'd have to go back and look. We send out a city manager's update every week, and I've made several announcements over the last six months related to activities going on in the community. Some of the recent crimes occurring down on 116 Los Angeles, to my knowledge, I've not made any comments about those crimes being related to mental health issues or COVID-related impacts. There have been many times in past months where I have made comments about different incidences going on in the city. If you look at the call logs and just the volume of work that our police department is doing, there are many activities, illegal activities going on in the community that we do believe have a correlation to the COVID pandemic, mental health crises. Even just a few weeks ago, we had law enforcement officers respond to a person swinging an ax in a front yard, was presented a danger to himself as well as to others around, obviously. So there's a lot of activity keeping our Monrovia PD very busy. Specifically, at 116 Los Angeles Street, on January 29th, we had a homicide, and two months later to the day, we had a second homicide. Both of these investigations are ongoing. They're being conducted by the Sheriff's Department homicide unit. We've released some information, what information we can share with the public. We do want residents to know that we're increasing patrols. We not only have one camera, but we've installed additional cameras to help monitor what's going on. Helps many residents feel safer when we've had these types of crimes. But these investigations will be ongoing for a while. Even today, I received a call for another incident involving a gun. There was a shot fired, not at 116 Los Angeles, but just a few blocks east. The incident, obviously, very concerning to residents. Fortunately, we had police department there on scene very quickly. But we just want to let residents know that, you know, we are seeing an increase in crime. We are addressing as quickly and responding as fast as we can. We do have a law enforcement officer, Captain Rob Wilken, is here in the council chamber today. Alan's got the day off. He's scheduled vacation time with family, but we do have police here who was able to listen to the comments, and we'll be sure to check into the intel we have on various gangs and, you know, any information that we can have. We really rely on our community to help us with policing. One thing that I do want to make sure council is aware of as well, and share to the community, is while we've been monitoring all these different activities related to crime and police department work... uh, related to crime and police department work, um, where we keep statistics on everything. We share a lot of this information on the city's website. Uh, but we have a lot of, a lot of important updates that I wanted to make sure council are aware of. Um, from January 1st to March 25th of this year, the city has, has made 156 misdemeanor charges for various activities of whatever misdemeanor charges out there. 155 of those misdemeanor charges, uh, have been rejected by the district attorney's office. So of 156 charges filed, 155 have been outright rejected. Typically, and in the past, these charges were filed. And, and so sharing just some of the details, you know, we are seeing that these misdemeanor cases that are occurring, you know, everything from drug paraphernalia, possession, under the influence, trespassing, drunk in public, unlicensed driver, obstruction of justice, uh, resisting arrest. These historically have been filed and now they're not. They're just outright being rejected. In one case, our officers stopped someone who had three outstanding warrants for, for themselves, and we had to issue a citation and let them, let them go. Uh, we're not able to get filings on these misdemeanor charges. A couple of specific examples that are of a little bit more concern to us in, in at least two cases that where burglary was committed. Both of those cases were rejected. In one case of attempted murder on Maple, um, suspect had already received prison time for attempted murder and murder as an admitted gang member. The district attorney's office doesn't file in those enhancements, the gang enhancements. So as made a comment earlier, can the city use these gang injunctions? Uh, well, those enhancements aren't currently being filed. Um, so the DA's office won't file them, uh, without them, you know, 23 years of potential additional time for any sentencing can't be added. Um, in one case with, uh, I won't go into certain details on another case, but I just, the, the point that I want to make to council is that police department's hands are, I don't want to say tied, but it's very limited in what we're able to do. And when we respond to residents who want to know what happened related to someone who was trespassing, you know, cases aren't being filed. Um, we just want the, you know, residents in Monrovia to know, we, we, our police department, it is business as usual. We're going to continue to do police work. They're going to continue to respond as quickly as they can when crimes are committed. We're going to continue to charge. We're going to continue to file. Um, and that's the approach that we're going to take. And that is absent anything else or any questions you might have. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Um, and to the gentleman that had his, his hand raised, uh, this is typically a portion of our agenda that is between the city manager and the council. And we appreciate the comments you made during your portion of the meeting. Um, but this is not a debate at this point, so thank you so much. I appreciate it. Uh, but I, I think the point is that the people of LA County have elected a district attorney who, there should be no surprise. I mean, uh, he stated many times, it was his goal to not send people to jail, so. Um, I don't believe the Monrovia Police Department was wrong 99% of the time in those filings. I'm not saying they're perfect, but, um, boy, if, if you can't file against someone for burglary, um, I don't know what kind of a message that sends to people, but it's probably not a very healthy one. But anyways, any questions from the council for Mr. Feek?
I just want to say thank you for the report and it's very important that, uh, our community hears this message because our police department is doing their job. And I want to, I want to thank them for that. And thank you for your report.
Any other questions for Mr. Feek from the council? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to our review of our oak tree regulations. Craig Jimenez, our community development director, will give us a report on that. Welcome, Craig.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, uh, members of city council. Um, as the council is, is well aware, the city has a oak tree preservation ordinance. This has been on the books since 1987 and Monrovia was one of the early leaders in the, uh, preservation of trees and, and actually regulating that. Uh, what our ordinance does is it protects, uh, mature oak trees citywide through the implementation of the oak tree pres- preservation process. Um, all species of oak trees are covered and mature oak trees are, uh, defined as, um, having a diameter of 10 inches or more and measure two feet above ground. So if it hits that threshold, then it is covered by, um, the ordinance. Now, before I, I go over the, the specific regulations, I think it's really important to understand the purpose of the ordinance. And, and most of our ordinances, especially land use ordinances, have purpose, uh, statements, um, which really give staff, um, a, a good understanding of how to interpret and, and administer these, uh, these regulations. Um, we try and, and, and make them as black as white as possible, but there's always situations where that it doesn't quite fit, so we always refer back to the purpose. And the purpose of this ordinance is the preservation of healthy oak trees, which are necessary to preserve and, um, preserve the present scenic beauty of and heritage of Monrovia, maintain property values and promote conservation natural resources. Is the intent of this chapter to establish regulations for the removal and pruning of oak trees within the city in order to retain as many trees as possible, consistent with the purpose thereof and the reasonable economic enjoyment of private property. So again, it's very clear in the purpose that, uh, balance between the preservation of oak trees and, uh, private property rights are, are really very crucial in how we implement that. So our, our ordinance is very straightforward. Basically, all oak trees citywide that meet that, uh, size threshold are subject to provisions of the ordinance with the exception of properties that are developed with a single-family dwelling, and this is regardless of the zoning district. Um, in those situations, only oak trees in the front yard or streets facing side yard for a corner lot, um, are subject to the ordinance. So if you're a single-family lot and you're on a corner, if it's in the side yard that faces the street, then those trees are also protected. But if it's in the rear yard, they're not, they're not part of the ordinance. And my slide's not advancing. All right. Oak tree preservation permit. So there are three conditions where an oak tree permit would be required. One would be for the complete removal of an oak tree or if a, uh, oak tree will be pruned significantly, which would remove one-third of the canopy and/or one-third of the root system. Um, the irrigation, um, is also reviewed. So if irrigation is going to be installed, um, or there will be grading within the drip line of a protected tree, that also requires an oak tree preservation permit. The process is established in the, uh, ordinance and basically a applicant, if they want to, uh, remove a tree or prune a tree significantly, they would have to submit an application. Uh, what's required is a site plan showing the location of the tree or the trees. Um, also they have to submit a report from a certified arborist that describes the condition of the tree, and then there's a $50 fee. Um, oak tree preservation permits are reviewed by the development view committee. Um, and if the, the decision is appealed, then that is reviewed by the planning commission. Within the ordinance, there is, uh, an exemption for emergency removal. So if it is determined that, uh, a tree poses an imminent hazard to life or property, um, any member of the police department, the fire department, um, or the parks division may authorize the removal without a permit. Um, additionally, the actions of public utilities are exempt. We do have some other tree preservation tools that are within the ordinance or within our purview. Um, within the ordinance, um, there is a finding, uh, allowance that if someone wants to do a development and it may interfere with the tree, we can actually modify the plan and, um, approve a variance using the preservation of the tree as a, uh, a finding to approve that variance. Uh, if, for example, um, we have, it's, we need to encroach into the setback, that would be a finding for that variance. Um, also within our development view processes, um, the preservation of all mature trees is a consideration through the entitlement process. Tree preservation can, uh, conditions can be imposed when applicable. Um, and we often actually do work with the applicants and, and put those conditions on, um, entitlement reviews. And then, um, finally, in the ordinance, um, there is a penalty clause. And so violations of the ordinance are either an infraction, um, if it's a single-family property or a misdemeanor for all others. And I think it's important to note that, um, over the last seven or eight years, we have had probably less than, um, 15 or 16, um, permits that have been issued, um, or even applied for. And the overwhelming majority of those have been either because the tree is dead, the tree is dying, um, or the tree is, has a, a disease. Um, very rarely do we get a request for it to remove a, a healthy tree. Uh, one of the other things that we do see on a regular basis is, uh, the removal of a tree when it's causing structural damage. So again, we're not seeing a lot of these, uh, requests, um, to go through a, for oak tree permit, especially when it is a healthy tree. Next slide. And then finally, uh, we did, uh, do a survey of surrounding jurisdictions to, to see how, how are they regulating trees? Um, Arcadia regulates the removal of all mature oaks and sycamores and certain other mature trees that are, uh, within the required setbacks. It does require a public notice and this is reviewed by the director. Uh, the city of Duarte, they regulate the removal of oak trees, California bay laurel, California black walnut, California sycamores and toin trees. Trees that are in the rear or setbacks, same as Monrovia, of single-family properties are exempt. This is also reviewed by the director. Um, in Los Angeles County, they have a heritage oak tree, uh, permit that's required. And basically heritage is a fancy way of saying a mature oak tree. Um, these regulations only apply in the unincorporated areas. This is reviewed by the planning director or the county forester or the fire ward, depending on where the location is and the reason for the removal of the tree. The fees range from, uh, over $1,200 to over, uh, $11,000 for the, just for the review. And then the state of California also does have, uh, tree preservation, uh, regulations, but this, these apply only to state-owned property. So that is a, an overview of our regulations. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, that concludes my presentation.
Great report, Craig. Um, any questions for Craig?
Tom?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I, not so much question as much as a comment because when this topic comes up, and I personally have many oak trees on my private property, which I've spent thousands of dollars trimming and maintaining and, and whatnot. But it is very confusing if you go online and try to get information and it, it appears that the information that's available online, it makes it appear that especially at the state and county level, that all oak trees are, are covered. And so people are thinking that, well, normally at the state and county level, that, 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 um, that would cover us. Um, and so I think that's where some of the confusion is coming, um, in. And I want to thank you for that clarification. So at the state level, um, the state regulations only cover state-owned properties, correct?
That, that is correct. They don't, there is no statewide regulation of, of oak trees that apply, um, that supersede any local jurisdiction.
Well, and, and I can see why people, um, get very unhappy. And I love my trees. My trees are like my family members, believe me. And my front, my sycamore in my front yard, I, I named her, I, it's even her, it's Marge. So, um, at any rate, I, I really love my trees, but, um, it is very, very, very misleading when you go online and trying to get information because people are led to believe that, uh, we are somehow violating, uh, state and, uh, county, uh, regulations. So I want to thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions for Craig? Well, I think it's probably safe since our district attorney won't file against burglaries. They probably won't file against tree removal either.
Right, right.
Um, and I don't know how much good an ordinance does, um, if there's no, uh, um, punishment for violating it, but I, I think the good news is Monrovians, it sounds like it, pretty much tend to protect them.
And I did, I did want to make, I, I'll ask Craig. Did we get many people calling and asking for information regarding, uh, oak trees on their property?
Yes, and then, and, and when trees are coming down, they usually call the police department. Um, but yes, we get a, we get a lot. And anytime we do approve a, a permit or, uh, we know that there's a removal, even if, uh, you know, one that doesn't require a permit, uh, generally our planning staff puts out an APB to all the departments because someone's going to get a call about that tree coming down.
Well, I do know that when I did have an issue with one of my oak trees, the city staff were very helpful. They did come out. They did recommend an arborist, which we did employ and had a report, uh, prepared. And we did work out something with our, our neighbors. So there are tools available, uh, to everyone to try to, um, save the trees. Um, so if we can all work together on that. And, uh, there are, there are ways of, of preserving them.
And we have some really good resources on our website about where to direct people to, to get more information.
And along that line, we should say we have a little bit more control than in the sort of state law misdemeanor context. We don't have to deal with the DA because if we were going to prosecute our own municipal code violations, the city prosecutor could, um, could file a misdemeanor.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good news. Thank you.
And that's it. And that's a reason staff has a little, um, better time sort of negotiating these things with neighbors because we do have a, a little bit of a hammer.
Good. Good to know. Any other questions for Craig?
I, I'm not a question, but I know that the tree that was recently, just recently removed from the, um, the Oaks Shopping Center, that tree had been near death for, I'm going to say it's been years now, but it has been very, very, very unhealthy for a very long time. And actually, it was probably, uh, could be considered a hazard. Um, and I'm sure that the owners of the, uh, shopping center had it removed. And I understand, did it, a limb, did something actually fall from the tree?
The, the tree fell. So the tree, and, and the, and the recent winds, it, it actually fell.
Yeah. So it had been very, um, very ill. I don't know how old the tree was, but, uh, in that case, they weren't being, um, just removing it for the heck of it.
Okay. Any other questions for Craig?
Um, so, um, have you, Craig, taken the temperature of folks in terms of what kind of appetite there is for strengthening our protection of oaks?
You know, I would say there's probably as many people who want more protection than there are, and as there are people who are, think things are fine, uh, as they currently stand. So I don't, you know, we don't hear, when an oak tree comes down, that usually we hear from a few people um, of concerns, but I wouldn't say there's an overwhelming desire one way or, or the other at this point.
Well, it happened, it seems to happen not too often from my, we, I, I, I hear from specific people. Um, but I'm trying to remember the last time I heard, uh, a cry go up about it. And, and it feels like it was like four or five years ago.
It, it, it isn't something that we hear really often. Usually when a tree comes down, then we may hear from a couple of people. Um, but generally it's not, uh, I, I wouldn't call it at this point a problem, um, in, in the city. And, and you're, you know, as, as council member Chevlin stated, most Monrovians are very protective of their trees and really, you know, they, they'll do everything they can to save them. Um, you know, we, we work with a lot of people who are in that situation.
I, I know that, uh, just recently, and that's what precipitated this, this report, that there had been, um, um, an oak tree removed from a rear yard. Um, I am not aware that it was diseased. I don't know why it was removed, if it was creating problems with maybe the, the home's foundation or some, something along those lines. Um, but it was definitely within the private yard space of, of the home. Um, so under the, uh, So under the, under our ordinance, it's not necessarily, if that's not protected.
Well, I think that's the question, Becky.
Yeah.
When we get calls on this, it's people asking us, should we be protecting trees on private property?
And when they do intervene, and in my case, there is a situation where there, it's a very large tree, and it can cause issues and whatnot. And it can be very, very expensive. So at any rate, like I said, my trees are my pseudo-children. I give them names. I will do as much as I possibly can to save them. And I would hope that others would do as well. But I am, I'm not in a position to dictate what people do in their private, rear yards, in the, in the public, where it's out, in the front yards, and in public domain, that's a different story.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Craig, I'm going to call on our city clerk. I think we have some comments that have come in on this item. Alice, if you would please.
Yes, Mayor Adams. And while I read the comments we received in writing, I'll just remind anybody participating, star nine on a phone to raise your hand, or click the raise hand button. First from Carmen Martinez, to whom it may concern. I'm writing to support the change to the oak ordinance. Carmen Martinez, the best community realtor in town, donated over 3,000 mast to our community, family, and friends. Let's protect our oaks. Next, from Erin Robinson. My name is Erin Robinson, and I live at 327 West Walnut Avenue in Monrovia. I was surprised to learn recently that oak trees in backyards in Monrovia's single-family zone are not protected under existing tree ordinance. This exception has allowed the removal of valuable oaks over the years. It is not necessary, nor is it equitable, since property owners in the rest of the city's zones cannot claim such an exemption. Oaks should be preserved regardless of their location on a property, and all properties in Monrovia should be subject to the ordinance. Preserving our oak trees will help preserve the character of our town and protect the integrity of our natural environment. And I encourage you to amend the existing ordinance to cover all oak trees in Monrovia, including those in backyards. From Michelle Brooke, I would like to request that the oak tree ordinance be amended to protect all oak trees in the city of Monrovia, public or residential. Our oak trees are a vital part of our environment and should be protected at all costs. From Adi Pohkamai. I'm a longtime resident in the city of Monrovia, and much appreciated that we are a tree city. And in order to better protect our oak trees, I believe extending the protection to the oaks to backyards, and not just on public ways, will go a long way in keeping with our commitment in being a tree city. I urge whoever is responsible to go forward with this ordinance for the better health and well-being of our fellow residents. And lastly, I believe, no, actually, two more to go. From Grow Monrovia. Grow Monrovia is a resident-run nonprofit organization established to be a vehicle for change, for betterment of the community of Monrovia. As of recent, we have been working with Public Works to get more shade trees planted in our city. We have lost many trees due to the disease, and it's becoming more important than ever for us to protect our healthy trees. Please change the oak ordinance to include protection for oak trees on private property. And lastly, from Shelley Brooke. Actually, this might be Michelle Brooke again. Apologize. I think it's from Shelley Brooke. I would like to request the Monrovia Oak Ordinance be amended to protect all oaks in the city. They're very important trees and should be protected at all costs. The city should also plant more oaks. If planted correctly, they can become one of the most valuable assets the city can have for many environmentally significant reasons, including protection from the effects of heat of summer, and to protect our residents from pollution. And that is the conclusion of comments received in writing. And I don't see any raised hands, Mayor Adams.
Okay, thank you, Alice. I don't see any hands raised. Any other comments from the council?
Question for Craig. One of the speakers mentioned disease. What kind of diseases are we dealing with in our trees?
I think two of the big things that we're seeing is root rot and the beetle infestation. Those are kind of the two big things that we're seeing on the oak trees when we get diseased trees.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do see one hand up, Rosemary Gavidia. Alice, can we allow Rosemary to share her comments?
Rosemary, you've been unmuted, I believe. You can go ahead and speak.
Okay. I did send in a comment. It didn't get read, so I'm going to go ahead and read my comment that I sent in. I just said, my name is Rosemary Gavidia, and I've been a resident of Monrovia for 12 years. I support the changes to the oak ordinance to include protections for oaks on private property. The oak tree is one of the most beneficial species for our environment, not only for native wildlife, but they are one of the most effective trees in reducing summer temperatures, absorbing rainwater, sequestering carbon, and decreasing our energy use. Oaks increase in value as they age, making homes more valuable and neighborhoods more desirable. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us.
So one other question. If we were going to proceed in the direction of protecting oaks on private property, what would the next step be?
Well, we already do protect oaks on private property. The only ones that are excluded right now would be in the rear yards of single-family developed properties. On multifamily properties, they're protected. On commercial and industrial properties, they're protected. So the only exemption we have right now is in the rear yard of single-family properties. Those are exempt. But front yards and single-family properties are covered by the ordinance.
So if we were going to close that loophole, what would the next step be?
That would be then to direct staff to begin to study the ordinance. And then it would go to, this is in the zoning ordinance, that would go to the Planning Commission, and then it would come back to the city council, to the public hearing process.
So how would we determine if this council has some appetite for that?
Well, I can, I can tell you I would not. It's been interesting, all the years that I've lived here, I've had a lot of people look in my backyard and tell me what I should do with it. But not one of them has ever come over and offered to help pay part of the water bill, or rake the leaves, or trim the trees, or do all of the things associated with that backyard. And although I can appreciate everyone's feelings about this, all the folks who said our trees, they're not our trees. If the tree's in my backyard, it's my tree. And although I love oak trees, and I will do anything I can to protect them, I'm not sure I want the government interceding into my backyard any more than they already do.
Well, I have a slightly different point of view on that. Maybe not, maybe slightly is an understatement. At Myrtle Court, we have an angleman oak. And based on the perceived age of that tree, I think that that tree predated Myrtle Court. And they even have predated most of the properties on Myrtle Avenue, including properties like the Oaks, and et cetera. We've spent, like Becky, we've spent a small fortune on that tree. But I think that it's just like preserving our architectural heritage. I feel like that tree behind me is as much to protect as the two landmark properties we've got. And feel very strongly that that tree belongs to the community and not just to us.
And our ordinance already protects that tree, Gloria. I mean, our ordinance, as it stands today, protects the oak tree on your property.
I understand that, but if, when that, when that tree was first growing to maturity, the only thing standing was the house that I live in before the bungalows were built. And so even if the bungalows weren't there, I would still feel strongly about protecting it for the future.
But they, but they are there in multifamily zones, commercial zones. I mean, it's protected everywhere except for the backyards of single-family homes.
And unlike you, I don't believe that single-family owners have the right to end the life of those beautiful trees.
Can I, can I offer something and see if there's any appetite for this? Along with you, Tom, I don't want to restrict it within the private yards, that rear yards preclude someone that if they need or want to remove the oak tree. However, would there be an appetite that in private areas that we could at least provide or require some type of either education as to trying to preserve the tree? Have someone come in before a mature oak is removed to understand why it's being removed, and that there's a possibility of it being saved, or even moved or anything else? Not to preclude them from ultimately, if the decision is to remove it, but to at least educate them as to how the tree might be saved if they're removing it for some perceived problem. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, I, I think we do that. I think, matter of fact, over the years, I've seen planting on many occasions where it was almost imperative to take a tree out, require that trees be planted to replace it, and actually more, more trees planted to replace it than were being removed.
I guess I'm, I'm talking about the situation with recently, where the homeowner removed, cut down a very large, mature oak in the rear yard. Again, I don't know why it was removed. I'm not saying that they would be, I'm not in favor of saying they can't. I'm just saying that in that situation, if you're going to remove an oak tree, that you might, we might ask that they contact the city to, and they can be referred, like in my instance. I was referred, I was referred to an arborist. And the tree is alive and well right now. So that's all I'm saying.
So you either want government to control what goes on in your backyard?
No, 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 no. They, you could still remove it. But I'm saying that sometimes maybe trees are removed because people don't, they're not educated, or they don't know what the options might be.
So are you saying somewhat of a, like a cooling off period, where we require someone to come down and get some information about the tree before they're allowed to remove it?
Yeah. I'm just saying if there's an appetite for that, that they just would get information, that they might be referred to, we could give them information on arborists, or just what their options might be. And that, I'm just throwing it out there.
Mr. Mayor, if I can chime in on this.
Please do.
You know, as a general matter, I support your position. I think that we have to balance, you know, property rights against the desire to preserve trees. I think that our current ordinance does that well. So I'm not, I have no appetite to change the oak tree ordinance. I guess I would be in favor of providing information to people, maybe through the city website, or at City Hall. But I'm also not in favor of requiring people to go through some, jump through hoops. Primarily because it's just another layer of bureaucracy that we have to implement and then attempt to enforce. And we already have enough, frankly, rules that we don't enforce. So I don't have an appetite to modify this oak tree ordinance.
Any, any other thoughts?
Yeah, have them get a permit. Going through the permit process, we'll have them to receive the educational part of it.
Is this a free permit, or are you suggesting that we charge people to remove trees in their own yard?
No, I didn't say charge for the permit.
Okay.
But when they come in to get the permit to receive the tree, they receive the information on the tree. I mean, that would drive them to come in in order to get the educational part of it. But that's just a thought. That's my thought.
I liked it, though. We are a tree city.
What kind of penalty would you suggest for failure to get a permit?
I'm not trying to put a penalty on them. I'm just trying to get them in to get information on the tree.
Yeah.
I understand that, but if there's no consequence to not getting the permit, then nobody's.
But that's your opinion.
It's not my opinion, it's common sense. It's, you know.
Okay, well, maybe what we can do is kick this back to Craig. And Craig, if you could take it back to your department and take a look, I think you've heard everyone's comments. And I think, generally speaking, as long as there's no cost associated with it, everyone's pretty comfortable with sharing education with people. And maybe take a look at that and bring us back something?
Will do.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay, now we're going to move on to RCM overview of public comments option. We've already gone over it once tonight. It's on the city's webpage. It's on our agenda. But it's such a monumental change, I'm going to ask our city clerk to go over it one more time, so that we're all pretty clear on how we can communicate with each other in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Adams. And good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update, not just of the how, but kind of the background and how we've come through this up until this point. So it's hard to believe, just over one year ago, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order N 2920, providing that cities do not need to hold public, or hold meetings at a physical location, and permitting council members to participate in city council meetings via teleconference. The governor required that public agencies provide an opportunity for members of the public to observe and participate in city council meetings, quote, "telephonically or otherwise electronically," end quote. In response to that order, in addition to guidelines from the California Department of Public Health resulting in the closure of City Hall to the public and prohibiting public gatherings, the city transitioned to conducting remote city council meetings. Only essential staff remained on-site to coordinate with KGM for the broadcast and live streaming of the meetings held with Zoom video conferencing. We make all of our council meetings available for the public to observe on KGM and the community media of the Foothills website. At the time we started in this virtual world, due to a very real threat commonly known as Zoom bombing, as well as the challenge of managing new technology with minimal staffing, the city established procedures to receive electronic written comments from the public. As you know, these comments are sent to the city council and posted to the city's website prior to the meeting. Since May, written comments have also been read in full by myself during the meeting. And for the handful of public hearings we've had in the past 12 months, we've also provided the means for all applicants and appellants to provide live testimony. This is consistent with what many other cities have done and still do, and met the direction of the executive order that we facilitate public comment to the city council, quote, "otherwise electronically," end quote. As we adjust our processes for public comment, I just think it's important to note that we have been complying with the letter and the spirit of the law throughout these challenging times. The Brown Act, adjusted by the governor's executive order, requires the opportunity for public comment to be made to the legislative body, which we've done through accepting written comments and providing them, not just electronically, but verbally as well, while keeping everyone safe from both the exposure to the virus as well as unintended and unpleasant cyber hacks. Public comment requirements protect the public's right to provide input directly to the city council, and we've protected that right throughout the pandemic period. So having received direction from city council at our last meeting, staff has worked toward providing opportunities for live public participation moving forward, albeit remote due to continued pandemic precautions in place. As noted on the agenda for tonight's meeting, the agenda notice, as well as a piece in the most recent city manager's update, um and mentioned a few times already this evening, the public may continue to provide their comments directly by submitting emails. In addition, they have the option of joining by telephone, computer, laptop, or smartphone through the Zoom app using the meeting ID provided. Participants will be admitted to the meeting and at the appropriate time will be given direction to raise their hand by pressing star nine on their phone or clicking raise hand in the app and will be unmuted at the appropriate time to make their comments. While we still have a very limited number of staff juggling the technology required to conduct these virtual meetings, we appreciate everyone's patience if at times it doesn't go quite as smoothly as we would like. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council for Alice regarding our new system, which I think, you know, for the inaugural evening, I think it's coming across pretty good.
I agree, Tom. I thank you, Alice, for all the homework you had to put in. And this, um I I think it's the the closest thing we've got to be in there with each other, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Alice.
Definitely a team effort, so.
And I think that, you you know, if if the truth will be known, and I and I won't ask her to be that honest with us, Alice probably never liked reading everyone's comments anyways. Um, you know, it's a lot of extra work, and sometimes those comments weren't that nice. And Alice is a very nice person, and asking her to read something that wasn't kind was probably pretty challenging, so I think uh everybody wins off of this.
Um, Tom, it uh I had a a comment, and thank you very much, Alice, and you and I had a a conversation. And Craig, this is kind of a question for you, too. As I understand it, I think there are, there's at least three pieces of leg legislation going forward that affect in one way or another this this virtual uh format. And it will be interesting because I can see a a a real value going forward, even if we're meeting in in person, that where we can keep some of these aspects available to the community because it uh it enhances their ability to participate. But Craig, did you have any um comment about any of the pieces of legislation that are going forward?
Um, well, I think it seems pretty likely that there's going to be some kind of electronic participation uh option required. It may not be this, it may not come out of this legislative session. It may come out of uh the next session because, you know, we're sort of still going to be in um a remote world for some number of months, so um I I but I think, you know, we all around our office think it's pretty likely there's going to be some kind of technological um requirement on an ongoing basis. And that's mostly, um you know, notwithstanding kind of how well it went tonight, mostly that's for the larger cities where it's really hard. Um and you have to travel up, you know, fairly fairly long distance to go participate in a meeting. Um and the legislature likes one-size-fits-all kind of uh solution, so I think it's a, you know, I think it's a pretty good bet that there will be some kind of technology uh aspect to our meetings going forward.
I know they say in Sacramento that it is helped because obviously it's very cumbersome, expensive, that time-consuming to fly fly or to get to Sacramento to participate in many of the things that that happened there. The one that I had discussed with um Alice has to do the one, it has to do with translation um uh requirements. And that could, that could be an issue and and percentages of certain languages within your community. So there are some challenges there, but I I do hope that we're able to continue a certain level of of this electronic communication. I think it just, it improves um or opens up the ability to share.
I couldn't agree more. Um a couple of weeks ago, um the mayor of South Pasadena uh testified at a committee in Sacramento uh regarding some legislation um via Zoom. And otherwise, she would have had to three minutes. Um and um I think if we're going to take seriously uh eliminating CO2 emissions, this is a really essential part that as well that we can feel good about.
Makes a seven AM meeting a whole lot easier, too.
Absolutely.
I think as we start to come out of this, we're going to see an awful lot of things in our lives change for the good that we were forced into because of the pandemic. And it should hopefully cut down on a lot of travel and uh make our lives a lot easier, so good.
Well, if we all wore masks during flu season, uh because I haven't even had a cold this year, it's just amazing what the difference that masks can make. We'll we'll see how it changes.
A mask and staying home.
Yes.
You stay home, you you can't catch the cooties. Okay, any other uh comments or questions for Alice?
Thank you, Alice.
Thank you, Alice. Great report, and and we appreciate all the extra effort added to this. We will now move on to uh reports to city council members and subcommittees, and we'll start off with uh Councilmember Spicer.
Okay, um thank you, Mayor. First, um for the spring stop and hop drive-throughs, uh Scravaganza that was held this past weekend, I want to thank our community service staff along with the sponsors, Prime Lending, Sierra Auto Cars, Monrovia Reeds, and also our very own fire department, along with the Dancing Bear, who had some rather good moves, you know, that he was putting on out there. And also the Bunny Rabbit, and lastly, the young lady who was um who had the Bunny Rabbit ears on, standing on the side waving at every, at all the kids going by, who was also known as Tina Cherry. And also, um uh Mayor, I wanted to uh just give a quick overview. I I attended the um Planning Commission Academy, and that was over a two-week period. Um I learned about the history and the purpose of SEQA, terms, acronyms, who does what and what pro and during the process, what is mitigation, um the changes that's coming ahead with SEQA, and how the decisions are um are made, along with the streamlining, the setting the baseline, project description. Overall, it was a good academy, and um I want to thank Alice for helping me um to get into the process, so um it was some valuable information. And finally, the Monrovia Area Partnership is having their eleventh annual MAP Neighborhood Conference on Saturday, April the seventeenth, from nine to one forty-five. So for those of you who has not signed up for it, please do so by going to the city website. And that's it for me, quick and to the point.
All right, Laura. Thank you so much. Uh Councilmember Shovlin.
Uh yes, thank you. Um tomorrow I have my homeless committee and then find uh followed by the Housing Trust um uh Committee. And I did want to mention that they've, for just information, they've got quite a few pieces of legislation that are coming up, and we are reviewing, and for the most part, we're watching. But I did in particular want to mention in terms of homelessness. I mean, it's one thing, we can build homes and things like that and provide supportive housing and and whatnot, but we really need the services and we really need to concentrate on um mental illness. Um a coup- a a couple of years ago, I think it was, and it was the same author, Santiago. Um this is an assembly bill, uh and this year it's AB thirteen forty, and it's again the redefinite, or not the redefinition, but a um uh broadening of the definition of gravely disabled and the ability to um in its uh mental health services involuntary detention because in so many cases, someone that really does require um help and assistance can wa- just simply walk away. And so this would um allow us to get get the services to the people that really need it. And I I hope um as this goes forward, we'll be watching and um we'll be able to support that um going forward.
Um, did you want, Becky, excuse me for interrupting, did you? Did you want to take a quick tally now? Because I'm sure it'll come up with the cog.
Yeah, it it's right now, it's we're we're just watching, and it's giving the report that we're getting uh tomorrow is just um a um for information only. But I'm sure that it will be coming um back to us, and so I'll bring it back here. And I know that in the past, we have as a council supported uh this this uh legislation, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm I'm encouraged about that. Uh in terms, talking about mental health, uh the Healing Connections uh group has um uh they had their March for Balance kickoff and all that, and they're really going full force on the month of April. It's been splashed all over social media, and I believe um uh Dylan will have it in his uh Friday update to the um events that are going on. They have fitness, they have sunset yoga, they have arts and crafts, they have walks, they have zooms, and um all through the month of of April, and it's all free. So and it's all in an effort to get people connected and to um let people know there are there services out there, and we are here to help one ano- another. And talking about further services, the um Foothill Unity Center is having um this Friday, there is a COVID nineteen um vaccine clinic. It is for unhoused individuals only. Uh again, I want to stress that unhoused uh individuals only, but they have had a program there on Fridays. They're providing showers, hot food or meals, uh free cell phone, um uh they're providing those services, haircuts, and they have charging stations. And again, that's at Foothill Unity Center, seven ninety West uh Chestnut. The vaccine clinic is this Friday, the ninth, from night twelve thirty to four thirty only. And again, that's just for um the the homeless. And if you have any questions, you can please contact Melody um at Foothill Unity Center. Um her email's melody@foothillcommunity, excuse me, foothillunitycenter.org. Or you can call them. The number, I'm not seeing, oh, the number is three five eight three four eight six, three five eight three four eight six regarding those services. And Dylan, I didn't ask you, but in terms of, I know it's not our our clinic, but are you able to make any comment about the community, the vaccine clinic that is occurring this week in Monrovia?
Yes, briefly, the uh we issued a press release last week. The um the city of Monrovia is able to host a vaccination clinic at the community center. It's starts tomorrow. It's a reservation only. It starts tomorrow and goes through Saturday. They'll do approximately two hundred vaccinations uh per day. Um there's certain criteria that are all listed in the press release. If people want to go online, there's a website. They can also contact our community center, and I apologize, I don't have the number in front of me. But in the red press release, if people have questions, concerns, or want help even making the reservation, they can even call our staff at the community center. It's not our clinic per se. It's a third party that's coming in, but we want them using our facility, vaccinating Monrovians, and that will be taking place tomorrow through Saturday. And and we would, we, right now, um the the only information we received uh about the the type of vaccine is it would be the Moderna or the Johnson and Johnson. We suspect it will be the Moderna, but we're just not one hundred percent certain. Uh as they administer those vaccines, they'll also be scheduling the follow-up appointments, and we're very hopeful that there will be future vaccination uh events going on as well.
Right, and I I did want to underscore, this is not the city's um vaccination clinic. It is a a third, private third party. Uh we are not providing volunteers, correct, for that, uh Dylan, other than it's in our community center.
Correct, not with the uh with distributing or administering vaccines. No, we're not. Just help support it before.
And um I know that we've closed meetings uh in honor of these people, but I just wanted to comment in the last week and and maybe a little bit before that, have attended a celebration of life services for Betty Sanford, Susan Hirsch, and Hector Elizavi. And they truly, truly, um their services were wonderful and just highlighted what wonderful uh people they were for and in our community and true servant hearts and giving uh back, and and it's really a shame that we've missed. We need more Bettys, Susans, and and Hector's. And um I just wanted to to mention their names this evening because um they they are so special, and we did have um their services recently. And just wanted to to point that out. Missed them, missed them all very much.
All right. Thank you, Becky. Appreciate that. Uh Councilmember Blackburn.
Yes, thank you. I want to follow up on some earlier comments about crime by our city manager regarding the DA's failure to prosecute crime. Uh in addition to what the city manager mentioned, uh as a reminder, he mentioned, I think, that a hundred and out of a hundred and fifty-six was it misdemeanors or crimes that we refer to the DA, the DA refused to file charges on a hundred and fifty-five of those. Residents should also be aware that Gascon is dismantling the DA's hardcore gang unit, which Sheriff Villanueva described as a suicide pact. Now, with that in mind, if you're unhappy with the DA's consciously choosing to not protect our community, uh then I urge you to join the effort to recall District Attorney George Gascon. For more information, you can go to recallgeorgegascon.com. I've already personally donated to the movement to recall this menace from our to our society, and I urge you to do what you can to replace Gascon with someone who will actually do the job of a district attorney by prosecuting the criminals who threaten us all. Again, for more information, you can go to recallgeorgegascon.com. Smart board.
Alex, I I I just want to chime in on that is that I have also um talked to the director of the COG to um look at the, from a regional uh standpoint, whether or not the COG would like to make a statement uh regarding that. I know that certain cities have taken a vote of no confidence or other um votes um on the matter, but uh whether or not the COG would like to um look into that is as well.
Yeah, I don't know what the rest of the council's view on uh George Gascon is, but I, you know, I feel very strongly that he is there specifically to not do the job job of a DA. Uh he presents a a real threat to uh those of us who would like to live in peace. So we need to get rid of this guy.
Thank you. And and it is interesting, you know, we all had a chance to to vote on this item, but uh thanks to some changes made uh by way of Sacramento, um doing a drive-by shooting, uh not being considered a violent crime. People who actually do drive-by shootings are subject to early release from jail. And you know, when you when you couple that with the fact that our DA doesn't want to put people in jail, there should really be no surprise that we have drive-by shootings, right? Um if you tell the public that a drive-by shooting is not a violent action, and because you're not a violent criminal, we're going to let you out of jail early, there really shouldn't be a whole lot of surprise that people actually go do it. Um so i- it'll be interesting because we're we're kind of at a turning point here where um, you know, we have a chance to to maintain some law and order, or we can not. And it'll be interesting. I I don't believe for a minute that the voters actually knew what they were doing. I think in many cases, they were misled. Um but as of right now today, that's the law. And uh, you know, hopefully some things will change because I don't think it's acceptable to tell our police department that ninety-nine percent of the cases that they bring forward are just going to be thrown in the trash. Um because if you're going to do that, then I don't know why we even have a police department. But maybe maybe that's the goal in the long run is to just get rid of that. I'm not sure. Anyways, thank you, Alex. We'll move on to Mayor Pro Tem Crutch. Anyways, thank you Alex, we'll move on to Mayor Pro Tem Crutchington.
Thank you, um this year, uh last year, the Monrovia Historic Preservation Group did not have a tour because of COVID. This year, we're gonna do something different and we've got a little film to show you about that.
Yes, Councilmember Crutchington, if you will uh give me a minute, I apologize. That slipped my radar, but please hold.
Okay.
If you have anything else in the meantime, carry on.
Well, um in um Alex Tachiki and I have been working hard uh roping our city manager into the drama of Stormwater. And, and so we've got a wonderful team working on our behalf. Did I go long enough for you, Alex?
Desperately searching for that link that got forwarded to me, I really apologize.
You know Gloria, if, if you like, I can give my report and we can come back to you.
That'd be great.
Is, is, would that help, Alice, is that okay?
Sure, um actually, um I, I'll jump in, that fantastic Assistant City Manager behind me found the link. Um so I think we can.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Just uh one more moment. Sorry. Well, I thought. You know, it can't go perfectly. We were on a roll.
Whoops. We had it for a moment.
The town of Monrovia, California was founded in eighteen eighty-six and in the one hundred and thirty-five years since then, has managed to retain much of the charm that resulted in the city being referred to as the Gem of the Foothills. The Monrovia Historic Preservation Group was founded in nineteen eighty and today, it remains the principal voice in the community for the preservation of our architectural heritage. There are currently a hundred and fifty-eight local landmarks, including the Box Jeweler's Street Clock on Myrtle Avenue. Monrovia has three buildings that appear on the National Register of Historic Places. The Aztec Hotel, which was built along the original path of Route sixty-six through Monrovia. The Oaks, home of Monrovia's founder, William Monroe. And the Upton Sinclair House, where the Pulitzer Prize-winning author lived from nineteen forty-two until nineteen sixty-four. The first home tour was held in nineteen eighty-three and there has been a tour every year since, except last year when it was preempted by the coronavirus pandemic. To avoid another cancellation, the Board of Directors has elected to hold a virtual home tour for twenty twenty-one. It will feature seven Monrovia homes, four of which are appearing for the first time ever. Here are the seven homes that will be showcased on this tour. What you need to know about the virtual tour. The tour will begin on May first at nine AM and will run through May ninth at nine PM. There are seven houses and seven videos plus an introductory video. You must register to watch the videos. An optional donation of twenty dollars is requested. Once you register, you will be sent a link that will become active on May first at nine AM. To register, go to the homepage of the MOHPG website, www.mohpg.org. We hope that you will decide to join us as we celebrate our passion for these vintage homes that we love. See you soon.
And um Jim, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh Jim Wigton uh worked closely with K-Gym and he did uh most of the filming and did uh and just a magnificent job. So we're really happy, we're hoping that there are a lot of people that um even people that don't have the mobility to go up and down stairs can go to see this. People who have just been too shy to go on the tour, what is it? Um and um and people who just love old homes will love this tour, so. And thank you.
All right Gloria, thank you for that, we're looking forward to it. So we'll move on, before I get to the resolution that I have on the agenda, I do wanna talk about our water circumstances right now. And Southern California is still in a drought, we actually never came out of a drought. A lot of people are acting as if we're not in a drought, but our water master is the one who controls basically all of the water in the San Gabriel Valley. The water master has always stated that the safe operating level of our aquifer is two hundred feet. And right now, we're at one ninety-six. So we're almost four feet below what the water master considers to be safe. You may recall about two years ago, the water level in the aquifer got down to one hundred and sixty-nine feet. And that is when the water master came forward with a hundred million dollar purchase of imported water. And when the water master imported a hundred million dollars worth of water, everybody got their bill, including Monrovia. And so I'm hopeful that people can do a, a little more conservation at this time. And maybe we can get through this period without having to have any um really expensive water purchases. So keep that uh on your mind, if you wanna take a look at it, it's a fascinating website, it's watermaster.org. And they'll show you that um the low point uh was November, two years ago, I believe, at a hundred and sixty-nine feet, the high point was two hundred and seventy-five feet. And the safe level is two hundred feet and we're four feet below that, so keep an eye on the water, please. Now I wanna move on to a resolution that we have that actually a lot of cities are doing right now and I wanna give everyone a little history for this. There, there's a, a trend in California that's been going on for many years now where the legislature is taking away control from local government and taking it up to Sacramento. And I think the challenge that I see and I think a lot of folks see is that there's a hundred and twenty legislators that work in Sacramento, three of them represent Monrovia. Which means a hundred and seventeen people that are working in Sacramento do not represent Monrovia. And if you've ever called a member of any legislature, the first thing they ask is where do you live? Because if you're not in their district, they're gonna refer you to the person whose district you live in. So the, the bottom line is that um when the state takes control away from the local government, whether it's the schools or the city, um that means the decision that they're making is made ninety-seven and a half percent by people who don't, don't represent us. They just don't represent us, that's not what they're there for, they're there to represent their districts. In a classic example, it wasn't that long ago that there was a bill circulating, it almost became law, I suspect it will come back, that was going to take away all local parking ordinances. Now, if you've driven up Encinitas um on a weekend, Encinitas and a lot of other cities in Monrovia were subdivided when the average house may have had one Model T. And now that average house has three cars. So when you have that kinda traffic, that requires some control. And that control historically has been through local ordinances to control the parking. But someone up in Sacramento, four hundred miles away, who has never probably been to Monrovia, thought that they knew better how to deal with this. So that's just one example of the impact that the taking away of local control has on a, a community, particularly the size of Monrovia. So when the, the control is with your city council, one hundred percent of the people making that decision work for you. We all do. And that's because we work at large, so no matter where you live in Monrovia, the five of us all work for you. But if the decision is being made in Sacramento, only two and a half percent of the people making that decision work for you. The others work for someone else. So to me, in my mind, the question really is, would you rather have access to a hundred percent of the people making the decision? Or two and a half percent of the people making the decision? And to me, it becomes very clear, so this is, it's become a growing problem. I know we have some comments relative to housing, it's not just about housing. I- it's about choosing your own destiny or letting someone else choose it for you. And i- if you're inclined to turn over the control of your city to ninety-seven and a half percent of the legislature that doesn't work for you, I, I can't imagine why anyone would do that. So let me read this resolution and we'll see if we get some support for it. Whereas the legislature of the state of California each year proposes, passes, and has signed into law a number of bills addressing a range of housing issues. And whereas the legislature of the state of California does not allow sufficient time between each legislative cycle to determine if the legislation is successful in bringing about the change for the state of California's housing issues. Whereas the majority of these bills usurp the authority of local jurisdictions to determine for themselves the land use policies and practices that best suit each city and its residents and instead impose mandates that do not take into account the needs and differences of jurisdictions throughout the state of California. And whereas the ability of local jur- jurisdictions to determine for themselves which projects require review beyond a ministerial approval, what parking requirements are appropriate for various neighborhoods within their jurisdictions, what plans and programs are suitable and practical for each community, rather than having these decisions imposed upon cities without regard to the circumstances for each individual city. And what zoning should be allowed for residential properties is a matter of great import to the city of Monrovia, among other items related to local zoning and housing issues. And whereas the city council of the city of Monrovia feels strongly that our local government is best able to assess the needs of our community and objects to the proliferation of state legislation that deprives us of that ability. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council that the city of Monrovia is opposed to the current practice of the legislature of the state of California of continually proposing and passing multitudes of bills that directly impact and interfere with the ability of cities to control their own destiny through the use of zoning authority that has been granted to them. The city of Monrovia will explore various ways to protect the ability of cities to retain control over zoning as each individual city within the state of California is best suited to determine how the zoning in their city should be allocated in order to meet the housing needs of the community. This is obviously if the council approves this. The city clerk shall certify to the adoption of this resolution. And I will make that a motion.
And Mayor, Mayor Adams, we um probably should take public comment on this before we um move forward with the action.
Could we ask some questions first?
Can you wa- Yes, okay, so why don't we open it up? Why don't we open it up for council questions and then we'll go to public comment and then we'll go to a vote.
May I ask how this resolution was generated?
This resolution uh came to us from a group of cities that are banding together. And um it was a somewhat of a model resolution that has been shared by, I think, seventy-two cities so far, last count.
Has been shared or approved?
Uh seventy-two cities that have gone on board and signed onto this and approved it, I, I believe the number was seventy-two.
But was there a specific organi- organization that generated it?
Um the, the, it's kind of a grassroots thing amongst cities. And to be honest with you, I don't recall the name that they have used to band together. Does, does that answer your question Gloria?
Um.
I, Tom, I could answer, I can answer that question. One of the, uh, one of the, I'll call it the lead groups is the city of Torrance. Um there have been several studies involved and, and they're referring to this, you know, kind of ad hoc group of cities as the California Cities for Local Control. Um they've already been meeting with groups like, you know, which widely known, the California League of Cities to discuss the League of Cities uh uh position on certain items and in some cases have even uh seen the League of Cities switch positions on certain housing-related issues uh in response to some of these meetings. So it is becoming more of a formal group, um but they, they reached out to us to see if Monrovia was interested and that's why it's before you tonight.
Um Tom, I, I will mention specifically as to um housing issues and one that had come uh before us and that's uh SB nine and that is miss, miss ministerial approvals of duplexes, lot splits in R one neighborhoods. And the um, the cog is opposing that unless amended. And that is the du- the conversation we, we had that would, that led to the comment about having a blanket of uh historic district for our city. Um many of these, these pieces of legislation give no consideration whatsoever for things like parking, uh water, uh utility infrastructure, schools, uh whatever, uh they're just talking about a proliferation of units without taking in consideration, uh and also setbacks. Um and there's all sorts of things on this, the one with the uh uh lot split that they would be able to do that uh would really, really impact um our neighborhoods and especially, well, like I said, parking, uh utility infrastructure, especially water, uh just like what you were saying with the drought and things like that. So many of these housing things, it's not that we're against housing, but to just demand that we build with, on a ministerial approval level without our input is just really um it's very damaging to our communities.
Becky, isn't SB nine um scheduled for a hearing April, I think it's April fifteenth?
Well, yes, we, we have already, this, the cog has already um um given their, their opposition uh unless um amended, so we have done that.
So you know the, you know, when you talk about the um takeaway of control, one of the bills floating around Sacramento, and I think it just narrowly missed passing last session, would have allowed within, I believe, a quarter of a mile of public transportation, buildings as high as forty feet tall with no parking.
That was the Weiner bill, right?
And, and the Weiner bill is, and the Weiner bill is back, it's uh, it's SB ten, so it is still alive.
So if, you know, to put that into perspective, when they say public transportation, we have a bus line that runs along Foothill Boulevard. And if you go up a quarter of a mile, it takes you up to about Primrose and Oaks. And if you could imagine starting And if you could imagine starting to tear down those houses and build forty-foot tall apartment buildings and then not require any parking whatsoever. And Monrovia being the fourth oldest city in LA County with all the parking problems that we already have, i- it, it will not make it any better, but um, that's part of, that's just one little piece of it. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Okay, Alice, I do see we have one person with a hand raised. Would you like to do that or read comments first?
Uh, no, I think let's go ahead um, and, and um, take the ones with hands raised. I also noticed that um, Catherine McCollum is on, um, on the meeting. And so Catherine, if you would um, like to speak live rather than have your public comment read, um, please go ahead and raise your hand in the next little bit, but we'll start with uh, Gail Montgomery.
Hello, Gail.
I'm your, let's see. Sorry, I thought, um.
There we go.
You moved around on me. There you go.
Okay, I'm ready. Um, so I have two issues. Uh, I thought that based on the conversation that I had with Tom that this also was going to tie to crime and I do want to circle back that because I have a request. I don't know that I like this resolution that much. It's effectively saying to Sacramento, you're not the boss of me. And why do we have government layers and government entities? Um, I, when I think of the water that, that we have, you know, there is the shared responsibility among communities to make sure that we have enough water within our region. Um, and that we have to pull together. In some respects, yes, w- we need to do the same with respect to housing because it was projected pre-COVID that we were gonna have this population surge. Um, I, I'm not sure that this works. I don't like the fact that, and we have talked, Tom and I, and I think Becky, I've talked to Becky about it. I don't like the fact that effectively a carpetbanger can come in and build anything they want and we can't stop them. Um, that does trouble me. I don't like the fact that what has been built has been hall, all high-end housing. Um, so it isn't doing anything to balance the community either. And that has happened because we couldn't stop them. But just having a resolution doesn't work for me either. If there needs to be a change, it seems to be a change in the law or the governance. You know, just saying, I don't like you just doesn't work. I want to segue to my second topic. I'd like to perhaps have a follow-up with Mr. Steele on this one. And that is, and I waited because I thought it was gonna be bundled here, having to do with the issue of crime and the district attorney. And as I mentioned with Tom and I talked yesterday, I really don't know the man. I didn't know much about him and didn't investigate him, but what I do know is that in November, we had two initiatives, uh, one Los Angeles County and one uh, state having to do with crime. And those things that we have caterwalled about that were removed from criminal penalty went before the voters and failed. You know, we wanted to have extra penalties put back in for things. And the fact of the matter, sixty-one percent of the California population uh, voted against doing that. The county measure effectively said that we want to revisit how punishment is meted out. Whether it's in the jails or whether we catch people early on in the process and rehabilitate and rehabilitate. And effectively, the California, Los Angeles County voters went for that methodology. So I don't know what part of Mr. Gascon's decisions are in alignment with that. And I would like to know, are, did we look to match up and would it be effective to perhaps have him come out and speak to the community, even perhaps on a council meeting? Because we still go back to two thousand eleven when we got smacked by the county, I mean, by the federal government for uh, adding all these criminal penalties onto things and locking people up and not building the infrastructure providing the um, the staffing such that we violated the constitutional rights, the Eighth Amendment for the prisoners. And we didn't do anything to improve that. We sent people out and put them on the street. Now people in light of last year's civil disturbances, um, it's clearly been shown that there has been disparate treatment within certain segments of the population. And some segments of the population are more apt to be locked up and put away forever. I think that's the logic, I know it was for me in voting for Measure J. But I, I know and I appreciate our police more than you know. But did we realign our expectations to go with the law? So maybe Mr. Steele could clue me in on that one. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Um, and I do see, there she is, Catherine McCollum. You're up. And I think you're still muted.
No?
There you go. There you go, you're up.
Okay, I'm just gonna read the letter. Um, thank you, Alice. Uh. Okay. Um, the resolution proposed by the mayor should be sent by the mayor as a personal letter to Assemblyman Chris Holden, State Senator Anthony Portantino, and Governor Gavin Newsom. As a city council resolution, it falls short of representing the, the opinions of many Monrovians. This city does not stand alone. We are part of a web of citizenships extending from city to county to state to nation. At each level, we accept some limits on our freedoms in exchange for the benefits of membership in a larger group. At each level, the scale of the problems which can be addressed expands. From city streets to county roads to state highways to the interstate highway system, we have benefited. The same goes for the areas of security, health, commerce, education. We do not live in a bubble. Unfortunately for all of us, the issues of housing affordability and homelessness have become national problems. California is particularly hard hit. The list solutions require much more effort than a single municipality can expend. And the problems will never be solved if each municipality works in isolation. It is to be expected that the state legislature would pass laws to address these issues. The opinion expressed in the resolution that the city council is best sol- suited to solve the problems of affordability and homelessness flies in the face of our experience. In the previous eight-year housing cycle, this city council failed the citizens of Monrovia. Of the approximately two thousand housing units approved by the city, all were market rate, which exceeds the guidelines for affordability. This year, some adjustments were made to provide a small number of units for low-income people in the Avalon apartment complex on South Myrtle. And the city is partnering with other cities to turn Moda into a mix of affordable units aimed mainly, mainly at moderate income people. But the city is still far short of meeting its RENA allocation for two thousand fourteen to twenty-one. And the new allocation is approximately three times greater than the last one. Right now Avalon is advertising a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment at three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. This would be an appropriate monthly rent for a family with an annual income of approximately one hundred and forty thousand per year. The median monthly income for Los Angeles County is seventy-three thousand three hundred dollars. A person making minimum wage at forty hours per week, fifty-two weeks per year makes twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Just take those numbers in. Homelessness is on the rise. We're losing families and our schools are facing falling enrollment, which has created serious budget shortfalls. We're losing businesses and one frequently overlooked factor is that we can't provide business workforce. Our workforce is moving to the inland empire and other po- points east because they can't afford to live here. How does this demonstrate competence on the part of the city council? It doesn't. Please vote no on this resolution. The city doesn't need a city council that wastes time on a blame game with Sacramento. We need a city council with the will to address our problems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Uh, Alice, I don't see any other hands raised. Do you have um, written comments?
I do, Mayor.
Thank you.
This first one comes from Connie Millsap. Um, her comments are inserted in between the lines of the resolution, so I'm just gonna read um, the comments received. And I do see another hand raised, so we'll come back to that after this comment. Um, so from Connie Millsap. Yes, state legislation is required to address the national housing crisis and local housing crisis has been brought by local representation of elected legislators to address these pressing issues. The housing crisis is far greater than local jurisdictions can address without national and state support. The state has proposed and passed housing legislation that provides parameters in which local jurisdictions can work within. The housing element which is required by the state is an eight-year cycle. This is an adequate timeframe in which to assess the situation and how the need is being met or not by local municipalities. The RENA numbers are a report card of how each city has met or not met the needs for housing. This is based on actual built property, therefore based on facts of how much housing has been developed for the various income categories. Monrovia does not exist in a vacuum from the continuum of LA County and San Gabriel Valley. Each city is responsible for its part in meeting the regional needs for housing. To date, most cities have not met the housing needs with its own local policies. Therefore, the state has had to step in with legislation to make cities do what they need to do for all citizens for housing. If cities were more responsive to the needs of citizens and not beholden to the interests of development, there would be a more balanced response to building housing. However, since this has not happened, the state has now has to provide to prompt local jurisdictions to do what they should do for the good of the communities. The state will, still allows local municipalities to develop their own policies within the parameters of state legislation. Local voice is not taken away by state laws. Local jurisdictions need to operate for the common good within the parameters of the state law. In addition, local jurisdictions need to address the historic and cultural housing injustance, injustices on which current zoning and laws were based. I voice opposition to this resolution in that it is self-serving and does not really reflect the common good of the citizens of this community in meeting the housing needs, as is reflected in the RENA report card. The city of Monrovia has not responded in good faith to the needs of the community in encouraging housing development at all levels of income and especially for housing at the lower income levels. That is from Connie. Um, at this time, if you like, I'll go ahead and um, ask Carol Daly, who has her hand up.
Welcome, Carol. You have to, there you go, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm getting better at this. Okay, oh, I tried to um, show my video again.
Uh, let me find you, Carol, you disappeared. There you are.
Thank you. Start my video, okay. Um, dear Honorable Mayor Adams, City Council members and City Manager, I am opposed to Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash twenty. I like that the state has handed down parameters for cities to work with that encourage housing for affordable housing. I like that we have been given regional housing needs assessment, the RENA, to meet goals that cities should be trying to attain. I'm glad that the state has loosened the rules about having accessory dwelling units, ADUs with grant, granty flats on properties. We have a crisis on our hands where sixty-six thousand people living on the streets in LA County need affordable housing. I'm working with citizens that have lost their housing in Monrovia and they cannot find an affordable place to live. Cities in our state need to respond to the need of, for affordable housing. As far as creating affordable housing in Monrovia, we seem as though we have, we have stagnated. On the city's website, it's boasting of the two percent of affordable housing that is in our city, that our city has attained. Two percent, big deal. We are blessed to have received the gold line coming through our city. Did we think broad-minded and build housing in all affordable ranges? No, we built the Arium with a hundred and sixty units and the Moda with two hundred and sixty-one units with their luxury units, neither of them with any affordable units. The recent one hundred and fifty-four unit at Avalon Bay project at Chestnut and Rural is advertising their two-bedroom, two-bathroom for only thirty-four hundred dollars plus. That breaks down to, if you're spending thirty percent of your income on housing, you'd have to be making a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year to live there. So you say, well, there's two incomes of seventy thousand dollars each. In my line of work in our food kitchen, we see so many people displaced from their homes when their spouses or partners die or become incapable of paying their half health or job losses, et cetera. We urgently need to implement the, a twenty percent inclusionary housing ordinance whereby if developers want to build in our city, there's a give-back towards affordable housing. The city of Pasadena has produced over one thousand affordable units since two thousand and one. I don't think our city has acted responsibly in assuring that affordable housing in, in our city is met. We have given our prized land away to the highest bidder and built places that demand top dollar. I'm very sorry about that. I am strongly opposed to the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Let's work with the state guidelines. Besides the twenty percent inclusionary housing ordinance, let's make ADUs attractive to homeowners by helping citizens to know more about them, by providing workshops, free blueprints of plans on the city's website, dismissing the impact fees, producing special financing, et cetera. Let's try to reach our RENA numbers. Let's do something towards affordable housing in our city, especially in the lower income levels. Respectfully, Carol Daly. And um, I just want to mention that um, I'm the co-founder of Foothills Kitchen in Monrovia and and that's, in fact, that's my experience with dealing with people that are living on the street or living on the edge. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate your thoughts. Okay, we'll take it back to Alice, our city clerk, and see if there's any more comments to be read.
I think we have a couple more, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, this comes from Melissa Taylor. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Adams. I'm writing in opposition to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty. It is no secret that Mayor Adams has disdain for Sacramento and rules brought down by the state. Unfortunately, there is a reason for these rules. It would be ideal, of course, if everyone just did the right thing for their community. But the right thing for the community depends on who you are asking. Are you asking the renters who are being priced out? Are you asking the landlords, homeowners and property owners who are concerned with property values? Are you asking younger residents who are aging into the time of buying their first home? Are you asking the older residents who are aging out of their homes? Are you asking the people who work for MUSD and our local governments but can't afford to live here? The reason we have legislation from the state is to address the housing crisis, which has been exasperated and is now beyond what local jurisdictions can handle. And the laws help create parameters for local jurisdiction. This resolution states that eight years is not enough time to address housing issues. If we plan for the long term, this allows plenty of time to address how housing issues are or aren't being met. We currently have not met the housing needs with our own policies, therefore we have needed the state to step in for all citizens. This resolution is nothing more than a selfish, selfish proclamation and does not reflect the entire community. We have had poor ratings in the RENA report card and we need to respond to the needs of the community, especially as our wealth disparities have increased. There is too much nuance involved to not have state involvement in these decisions. I am housing advocate and we need to focus on people. Housing is a right and everyone deserves the right to affordable and fair housing. I believe we as a city can do so much better and I believe the state providing guidelines and parameters will only help the entire community of Monrovia. Cerely, Melissa Taylor. And I believe I have one last comment from Phil Cannon. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, as written, is a spiteful smear on Sacramento lawmakers by a reactionary who doesn't like the progressive policies and goals. It does- It does not benefit Monrovia to be confrontational with state representatives. They are accused here of authoring a vague but vast multitude of bills that encroach on our freedom, but not a single bill is specified. The accuser is thereby conveniently shielded from the scrutiny of any fact checker. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty concludes with an ominous warning of a plan to explore various actions that will protect us from this postulated tyranny. Déjà vu. Recall twenty seventeen. Take back our parks and streets, et cetera. The prolonged disaster that took place the last time our city was led into futile fruitless battle against some state laws. Considering that, let us resolve to quickly quash this quixotic crusade. And that uh concludes all the comments that I've received.
All right. Thank you, Alice, and thank you everyone that sent in their comments or spoke this evening. And I'll look back to the council for, see, I think there was a motion. I'm not sure I heard a second.
Yeah, Mayor, I uh I did offer you a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there any other comments?
Um yes, I'd I'd like to make a a couple of comments, especially and if I look at this resolution, it really is specifically regarding local zoning and housing or or um issues, housing issues. Um several comments have been made about RENA uh numbers. Traditionally, RENA numbers have never built any units. Uh they are they dictate uh zoning, but they don't actually get units built. And that's one of the problems and traditionally regarding regardless of what your zoning is. Monrovia, the city of Monrovia doesn't build units. Um it is it's it's expensive and yes, there are inclusionary um uh ordinances and things like that that can be put in place, but then developers can also choose to go build um elsewhere. It's a very uh complicated um um set of issues and circumstances and and whatnot. Um this particular resolution, I don't particularly care for um the way, I think it paints it with a pretty broad brush. Um I don't specifically like the word uh words control their own destiny. Um because it does sound like it um we're just gonna go off half-cocked or something like that. I do very much support local control and I think a lot needs to be done to work towards local control. I personally would like to see maybe we take something um back that we can um have maybe staff work on or even have maybe the the COG look at that could work on something that really is more specific without just saying, hey, we wanna do our own thing. Um this is too broad um for me.
Well, what this what this says is the city of Monrovia is opposed to the current practice of the legislature continually proposing and passing multitudes of bills that directly impact and interfere with uh the ability of cities to control their own destiny. So zoning is a lot of different things. Uh zoning is parking. So do we want the state of California to take away our ability to have parking ordinances?
No, and and I think there's a better way other than this this um I don't have the actual wording right now, but I think there'd be a better way of of saying that to the uh state of California and to our specific legislators. I know that through the COG, we met with Senator Rubio uh specifically on this very issue. Um and it at times it was rather contentious. Um and uh I'll I'll leave it at I'll leave it at that, but I think there's ways that we can communicate that idea without saying a pretty much, to me, just says, we're gonna do it our way. We're just gonna do it our way. And I think there's a better way of working working together um and getting our message across and being more specific how we want how we want that partnership and that uh leadership and governance to work.
Well, I don't I don't see anywhere in here where it says we're gonna do it our way.
Well, control our own destiny.
What it says is we're really tired of the state taking things away.
And so and so am I. I'm just saying that this particular piece of paper doesn't do it for me.
Okay.
I have to agree with Becky. Um having worked in a extremely contentious arena for the last six years, namely stormwater, my objection to this is it's gonna go nowhere. Well, it may actually just make some people angry up there. Um but it's it's not gonna work. Um there may be a way to have constructive discussions with Sacramento, but this isn't this isn't gonna do it. Uh but if I be if I could just finish my thought on this. Um part of the problem with the state is that they come up with ideas and don't provide the money to execute them. That that is the basic flaw. Um but even so, um I don't find that most of our legislators are particularly eager to hear that. Um yeah, in the stormwater world, we've been working with um Assemblywoman Rubio and her sister Senator Rubio um on the stormwater arena to link um our goals with um affordability. Um and 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 trying to work together. Um so at this letter to me, just I don't like the tone. Um that nyan-nyan tone. Um I think we could have some um more constructive conversations with a- our our legislators if we got together with them more often, which I'm suggesting that we do. Um I I ju- I just, the tone of this, I just think is doomed for failure.
Well, we we have tried to work with our legislators and I think the problem is is even if all three of our legislature legislators agree with us, ninety-seven and a half percent of the legislature doesn't work for us.
But on the other hand, Tom, we've got uh uh Holden and um Portantino on very powerful committees in the Senate. Uh we're we're watching some of this stuff we're doing with stormwater and getting some traction. I think there's a way to change things, at the risk of sounding like a marriage and family therapist. There is a way to change things and there's a way to say it and just harden people into their positions. And from the moment I heard I first read this thing, um it got my back up 'cause it's just doomed.
Well, I I I do know, you know, we've we've been trying for the past twenty-five years to get them to soften their grip and it just keeps getting worse. So, I mean, we can keep talking to them, but there isn't any indication anywhere that continuing to talk to the people we've been talking to is gonna change things because
Tom, when when I first got on the council, Monrovia had a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bill for stormwater compliance. Ain't no way. We chopped it down to twenty-five million. We've gotten praise. Um recommendations from the most litigious environmental NGO. Um NGOs in the area. There are ways to do this. It's just not as easy. It's flipping out one letter. It's a lot of work on the ground. And I'm more than happy to talk with you at length about it, but this ain't the way.
Well, I I I disagree with you. I mean, I think uh you and I talking about it won't solve the problem we have in Sacramento. And there's a reason the league is starting to turn towards this, because more and more cities are voicing the fact that they're fed up with uh the the Sacramento grab. And if you're talking to people that are taking things away from you is probably not gonna change their desire to take things away from you.
Well, that has since been my experience.
Okay.
And and then just what you said, talking or working with the the league. Um I think maybe being a little more inclusive with the conversation there, but in terms of RENA too, I I think no promises, but I think we really finally hit a tipping point as to the unhappiness uh over the RENA uh numbers and the process. And I I really do think that we're going to see some changes there and there's a great deal of discussion. I serve on the 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 one SCAG committee that deals specifically with that. And uh the dialogue has been very robust. And there has been a lot of pushback. And in fact, that last uh go-round, there were, I can't remember the exact number of cities that appealed, and although they didn't succeed, there really has been a bigger push and an outcry for for change and unhappiness. But this, I I'm just saying, Tom, I am definitely for local control and I think we should preserve do whatever we can to preserve our local control. I'm just saying that this document, the way this one's worded, it it doesn't work for me and and as Gloria said, I I just don't think it's gonna get us anywhere other than getting people ticked off.
Then then we continue to allow them to take
No, we don't. No, we don't. No, we don't.
Okay. Okay, um so a- any other comments?
No.
Okay, then uh Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Blackburn?
Yes.
Chevlin?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Uh Mayor Protem Crujington?
No.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Thank you all for your comments. I appreciate everyone that came this evening. Um that fails to pass, so we'll put that to bed.
Oh wait, can can we stop there? Can we work on something? Can we um I don't know, Dylan, with um either our community development uh department? Obviously, this is really about zoning and housing. Um can we have further discussion? I don't wanna say that this is just a a dead subject.
Well, this 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 issue is a dead subject.
This resolution, the resolution is a dead subject.
Dylan, there used to be a time when we would have a sit-down with Holden and Portantino as the council. Is there some reason we can't bring that back and have a list of discussions that we'd like to have with them?
And and get them to do what?
Well, it what
Well, you gotta start somewhere, Tom. It it the bluster in that in that is not gonna do anything. You know it, I know it.
And 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 that's fine. I mean, we're not gonna do this and and I'm okay with that. But you have to understand that this just didn't start yesterday and we didn't say, hey, we want you to stop. This has been going on for decades.
Dylan.
So, uh this, I mean, if if one of you wanna come up with your own idea on how to solve it, that's fine. This was an idea that was brought to us from the city of Torrance and it's been picked up by a lot of different cities throughout the Southland expressing their concern. And we're just not gonna get on board with them. And and I I am totally okay with that.
Dylan, can we set up something to have some discussion with um Assemblyman Holden and Senator Portantino? And actually, we've got more people than that. We've got Assemblywoman Rubio, who has a part in Monrovia.
And that's that's the three out of a hundred and twenty that actually work for us.
I'll I'll also bring this up at the at the COG uh level and the SCAG level in the in the committee at the committee level. Like I said, there's a lot of unhappiness. Um but I I just don't think this resolution's the route to go. I'm for local control.
You've you've made that you've made that loud and clear.
It's gotta be a better way to
Also on the ex uh COG executive committee as chair of the water policy committee. So Becky and I will join hands and
Okay.
Push.
Good. Okay, we will now move on to our uh administrative reports. And AR one is an amendment to Title Two, changing election days. And um this is another thing that the state keeps doing, is changing elections on us. But I'll turn this over to our city attorney, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, members of the council. Um good evening. Uh we had quite a discussion about this subject at your last council meeting, so I won't uh do an extensive uh description of the history again. Just to say that um to remind everyone that in twenty seventeen, in response to a legislative uh um requirement, the city uh decided to change its regular municipal election dates from what had been decades of a spring election in the odd years to the date of the statewide primary election, which at the time was in March of even years. And um we did that over a cycle, uh obviously a four-year cycle, so two sets of elections, one of which has occurred. Um the other which has not. Um and extended council members' terms as allowed by state law um to move the election to the statewide primary date in March. That was late twenty seventeen, early twenty eighteen, as required by law. In twenty nineteen, the legislature and a different bill changed the statewide primary date um in uh presidential years and non-presidential years. And so now in California, we have a March primary in the non-presidential years and we have a June primary and, I'm sorry, we have a March primary in the presidential years and we have a June primary in the non-presidential years. And so um we have a situation where the city's election date is called out of the municipal code as being a particular Tuesday in March. Um in some years, it's gonna be March and in some years, it's gonna be June. Um as a result of this change that the um legislature made. So you have before you a proposed ordinance to kinda keep up with the changes that continue to um occur. And um that ordinance would do a couple of basic things. One, it would change the general uh municipal election to not be on a particular date because um as we say, there's it's variable now and the legislature could again decide to change it. So we have changed the language to be uh to say that the general municipal election date will be on the date of the statewide primary election every two years and we'll just have to kinda go with the flow if um the legislature changes it again. Um second, we have a provision in the existing municipal code that um provides that the mayor would be elected each even-numbered year at the general municipal election. That has a specific language in there about a date and a two-year term. Um because of this odd situation with the different dates for primary elections, we're now going to have the um, you know, I think really unusual situation of having a mayor elected in March some years and June other years. And that means that you're gonna have um a certain number of months in a term uh in in the years where the mayor's elected in March and different number of months in a term where the mayor's elected in June, but we're never gonna really go back to having uh an exact two-year term uh for the mayor, just because of the way this all shakes out. Um uh and then finally, in this ordinance, we kind of delete some references that were left over from earlier years where when the city went to the elected mayor system, we designated some terms as being a a short term and some being a longer term, so that you would all be elected uh in staggered years rather than having all four or five members of the council on the ballot at the same time. So um those are the um major changes that are proposed by the ordinance. We've also uh removed some of the uh masculine pronouns that that were in the existing ordinance to sort of update that. Um and um staff is recommending that the council introduce and waive further reading and read by title only this proposed ordinance. There is a relatively minor fiscal impact of adopting the ordinance. State law requires that we mail notice to the voters that the election date has changed before conducting an election, and the city clerk has been informed that the cost of, of that mailing by the county would be about eight-thousand-five-hundred dollars. That would have to be done before the election next year, but after the Board of Supervisors approves this change. The city is not the only city in this boat. As you know, when you made this change in 2017, I think there were, you know, something approaching thirty Los Angeles County cities that, that decided to, to move to March the way that you did. Excuse me, including several of the cities that we represent. And everybody's sort of struggling with this issue, because the county will not be conducting elections in March of 2022, because they're only going to conduct elections on statewide election dates. So everybody's sort of scrambling. Many are discussing this same change. The city of Beverly Hills has arranged with Senator Ben Allen to carry a bill that would automatically extend the terms of members of city councils that were scheduled to be elected in March until the election date in June next year. Last, at your last meeting, you discussed that and took a position in favor of that bill, and we have drafted a letter for the city manager to send to members of the legislature in support of Senator Allen's bill. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and that concludes our report.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions?
I have a question. Then, short of that legislation, do we have to then, it obviously, we're going to have to have the election in June. Do we have to take some formal action then to extend the term of, that would be Larry? And, well, the, the, if they're going to run again, that, that, those terms would be extended?
Well, I mean, this isn't about who would run again, because.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sorry, I was, I was confusing. It, it doesn't matter. Those seats would be.
Well, I mean, the issue, the issue is the people who are in the seats right now, because that, that term is the one firing.
Right.
And, you know, we certainly hope that Senator Allen's bill is successful, because that just makes it cleaner. We have in section two of the ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, section, section two of the ordinance, an extension of the incumbent's terms. Right now, it's not technically authorized by state law, because we've already had those terms extended once to respond to the legislature's last bill. So my thinking on the issue is, well, we'll hope that the legislature does the right thing, because they created the problem. But, but generally, the rule is that an office holder holds office until his or her successor is elected and qualified. So even if the legislature doesn't adopt that bill, your, your terms are over at the time your successor is sworn in. And so that would be kind of our fallback position.
Okay, so we're, we're covered anyways. I've got another question, but I'll, I'll wait and see if anyone else has a comment.
Any other questions for Craig?
If no one else does, I, I do have another question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Becky.
Since this is, it creates a situation with the, the office of mayor, and one term is going to be an extra three months, and the other one is going to be less three months. At any rate, a couple of years ago, I think it was, we discussed, I'm not sure exactly, but it's been at least a couple of years ago, we discussed the, the idea of putting forth a ballot measure or going to a, a rotating mayor. That would have to go to, as I understand it, it would have to go before the, the community as a vote in order to be changed. But possibly that's something that we want to, again, entertain or, or look at since we have all these issues.
Yeah, that, that would have to be an issue that would go to the, go to the voters to change the mayor's seat back to a, a regular four-year city council seat. The rotation or the selection piece of it is really a matter for the city council to decide if, if, if there was not an elected mayor in a two-year term. But the, but the change back to the four-year, full four-year term, as just a member, I shouldn't say just, as another member of the city council, would, would be a ballot measure. You could do that if the council was so inclined at the June election next year, if that's the, the change that is made. The deadline to do that is eighty-eight days prior to the, to the election. So help me out, Alice, do you happen to know that date? It's essentially three months before the election, so.
And we're ending math, March.
Mar- March, early, early, it's a, it's a Friday in early March of next year.
Right. Okay. All right.
Okay, any other questions for Craig? Then I'll entertain a motion. Or not?
So I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it here. So what exactly then are we, we're change, we're changing the date then to the first? We're changing it to the, the, the new primary dates, right?
Right. In twenty, in 2022, it would be the June date, because it's not a presidential year. In 2024, it would be the March date, because it is. And in 2026, it would go back to the, the June date again, at least under existing state law. But the language of the ordinance says is that whatever date is the statewide primary date, if the legislature decided to change it again, that would be the date of the regular municipal election.
Okay, not the best system, but I'll, I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to change from regularly scheduled elections to occasional elections. I say that very tongue-in-cheek, but we have a motion in a second. Is there any other comments or questions? Hearing done, Alice, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Blackburn.
Yes.
Chevlin.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Crutchington.
Yes.
And Mayor Adams.
Yes. Mr. Steele, please read it.
Thank you, sir. It's ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Monrovia, California, amending Title Two of the Monrovia Municipal Code to change the date of the city's general municipal election from the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March of even-numbered years to the date of the statewide primary election in even-numbered years in response to SB 970 and adjusting terms in office accordingly.
Thank you, sir.
So can, what about Becky's other proposal that we entertained before? I've got to tell you that as time has gone on, and I am going to speak as some marriage and family therapist, this elected, separately-elected mayor stuff leads to fights and grudges and things that just don't go away. I just don't see it happening in other cities, where they're just adults who rotate on an annual basis. The, the places that have separately-elected mayors are all much bigger cities, like Pasadena, like Long Beach, like the city of Los Angeles. This is nuts. I, I would gladly love to see us rotated, like we do Mayor Protam.
So I, I have been in favor of that for a long time. And one of the things I've noticed for a long time is that, you know, the community asks five people to come, to come together and work for the good of the group. And then on day one, you tell one of those five, well, you're just, you're just a head above the other four. And that starts the rub. But I will also tell you, Gloria, that there are plenty of cities that rotate, and they have their own issues. And I think they have their own issues, because some people just never learned how to get along. But there, there, you, you start, as a matter of fact, that's how the directly-elected mayor started in Monrovia, was because one side of the council teamed up against another side of the council. And out of that grew, okay, well, we'll show you. We'll elect the mayor. So there's no magic bullet on, on making five people learn how to, what I always call, learn how to play on the playground together for the good of the group.
Unless maybe we put more Prozac in the water supply.
Well, maybe. But, but I, I, I do believe that eliminating the directly-elected mayor, I think, is a positive step. But I know at one point, all five of us expressed our support for that, and then that support kind of wavered. So I don't know if they're, I, I mean, it, it will be a very difficult bar to clear, because you have to convince the voters that it's in their best interest to give up something that they have.
Well, what about if we agendize it for the next meeting, perchance? And get some public comment?
But I have a question.
Yes, sir.
But what, what, the council, will it be automatic? Or would the council, the four council members, the council member was, damn, I mean darn. So will the five council members vote on whether that person become the, um, the council member? Because, you know, some people change when they get a little power, Tom.
Oh, I know. We've seen it heavily.
Something else. You know what I'm saying?
I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
And, and I'm sure Craig can probably weigh in. There, there are different ways of, of doing it, but in our particular, yeah.
There's every way imaginable. I mean, you, you name it, and there's a way of doing it. But the important thing is that, long before you decide how to rotate, you need to make the decision that you want to rotate.
Right. Right.
And, and after you clear that hurdle, then the next hurdle would be, how do you rotate? And if you clear that hurdle, then it's convincing the voters that they need to give up something that, that they currently have.
Well, I like Gloria's, Gloria's idea, if we could agendize this so that we can safely discuss it openly at, at a, at a meeting.
Absolutely.
When we had this before, there definitely was an education lag, educational lag, or understanding as to what the offices of mayor is.
Yeah, put together a study session for it.
That's a ten-four.
Yeah.
And I, and I'd suggest it's maybe a little bit out in the future, not, not the next meeting, so we can do some
Put some.
research for you and give you a little better breadth of information.
Good.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, any, any other thoughts from the council? Okay. I, I do want to thank everyone who came to our meeting this evening, those who watched from home, on their phone, on their computer, those who sent in their thoughts. We appreciate everyone's comments. Unfortunately, tonight, we're going to be closing our meeting in the memory of three members of our Monrovia family that we've lost. And this is always the hardest part of our meeting. We're going to be adjourning in memory of Evelyn Kenyatta Weatherly, a forty-year Monrovia resident. If you would keep her family and your thoughts and prayers, I know they'll appreciate it. We're going to be adjourning in the memory of Gabriella Reisman, the mother-in-law of Community Media of the Foothills Executive Director, David Palomera's. And then we're going to be adjourning in the memory of Donna Monroe. Donna Monroe was the mother of April Monroe Soash, who served this community so well, as the Director of Community Services. She leaves behind her husband, Bill Monroe. Bill spent his entire career working for the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Donna and Bill were married two days short of their sixty-fourth anniversary, when Donna passed. Monrovia residents, and I know Bill spent his whole life trying to keep Los Angeles County safe from crime. And Bill, if you're listening, we appreciate your service to our county. I know Donna will be missed, and if you will keep April's family, along with Brian, their kids and grandkids, and, and Bill Monroe, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I know they will appreciate that very much. So we will adjourn this evening, and we will see you all back here in two weeks. And hopefully, more people will become accustomed to adjoining in on the Zoom or on their phone or somehow sharing their thoughts with us. Thank you all so much.
Bye.
Thanks, Alan.
Thanks.
Thank you, Al- Atlas.